Welcome to the 12th meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please turn off your cell phones and when addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and speak into the microphone. We have some minutes to approve. May I have a motion please?
Yes Chair, motion to approve the regular minutes of the 44th meeting dated 6/5/2025, the 45th meeting dated 6/12/2025, and the 46th meeting dated 6/26/25. Additionally, I'll move to approve the executive session minutes of the 44th meeting dated 6/5/2025 and the 45th meeting dated 6/12/2025 as previously circulated.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular minutes of the 44th, 45th, and 46th meetings and the executive session minutes of the 44th and 45th meetings. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the minutes are approved. Calling agenda item number one, transfer application number 25-01426, Aloha Bento LLC.
Mr. Chair, I'm taking a disclosure. I know the applicant as business resides in, as my employer, but this will not affect my ability to be impartial in deciding on this matter.
Okay, noted.
Good afternoon Chair, members of Commission, great issue of authorization appearing at the happy applicant right is Tyler, number manager Tyler H.I.R.A.N.A.K. Again, we received investigative report of no changes there.
Okay, and Ms. R.I.?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Hey, is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify either for or against this applicant? Hearing none, Commissioners?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Motion to approve transfer application number 25-01426.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 25-01426. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number two, application number 24-02161, Vintage Books Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon Chair, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Chikala representing Vintage Books Hawaii LLC. To my right is Mr. Bill Tobin, who is the owner of Vintage Books.
Mr. Rob?
Oh, we're appearing today for our dispenser general.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This matter was continued from the September 4th meeting. Public hearing kept open. This application has received one written protest, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to testify either for or against this applicant? Hearing none, Commissioners, question?
Let him know. Let's go.
Motion to approve application number 24-02121, I'm sorry, 04-0, hold on. Motion to approve application number 24-02161.
Second? Been moved and seconded to approve application number 24-02161. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Thank you, right?
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three, application number 25-01155, Habes Mexican Grill. I can place it back, right?
You get a similar, to my right, to my right is Javier Pania, he's the owner. His last name is P-A-D-I-L-L-A, Javier is J-A-V-I-E-R. He's represented by Council Wing Luke, so we have no changes to investigative report. He has been operating under a license, special license since December of last year and we've had no problems.
Okay, Ms. R.I.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the July 24th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Hune prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone who'd like to testify either for or against this applicant? Hearing none, Commissioners, questions?
I have no questions.
No. Motion to approve application number 25-01155.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 25-01155. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, application number 26-0000013, Pukapants, this is, hello.
Good afternoon Commissioners.
Afternoon.
Jacob Vella, J-A-C-O-V-V-E-L-L-A.
Daniel Bruce, D-A-N-I-L-E-B-R-U-C. Ms. R.I.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters and support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the July 24th preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Hune prior to the public hearing.
Hey, is there anyone who'd like to testify therefore against this applicant? Hearing none, Commissioners, questions?
I have none.
Motion to approve application number 26-00013.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-00013. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number five, application number 26-00428 from Your Event Solution LLC.
Hello gentlemen, Troy Gravatt, G-R-A-V-A-T-T.
And let's see, wow, all that going on. What's what's going on?
We are gonna have another sit and shop sparkle. At this time, we've had some at the Ahala Mall in Kahakama Kana Ali. This time, we're going to do it International Marketplace.
Okay, and these are just all the stores where?
Yeah, those are all the locations in the marketplace.
Okay.
Commissioners, question?
I have no question.
Motion to approve application number 26-00428.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-00428. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, applications number 26-00465-1 to 26-00465-122, I don't see Mr. Co.
Um, yeah, with respect to agenda item number six, the applicant's counsel has requested that this matter be rescheduled to the October 2nd meeting, please.
Okay. Do we need to?
No.
Okay. Calling agenda item number seven, application number 26-00482, Free Spirits LLC.
Thanks. Good afternoon Commissioner and Chair, Matthew Choi, manager for Free Spirits. I have no changes to the investigative report for the Middle Honey Fall Festival.
You want to walk us through this?
Yep, if there's a similar format as like the Kailua Fall Festivals. The entrance way is going to be kind of along that long hallway where it'll also be barricaded off so that the under 21s will stay on the under 21 side and then inside the Y MCA will be a 21 and over area and it kind of goes right up into the stage. In the parking lot, we'll have kind of these kids activities for them. So everything on the outside of the Y will be for unders and everything on the inside will be for overs.
Commissioners, questions?
I have none.
None. Motion to approve application number 26-00482.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-00482. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. We'll call out of order, agenda item number 10, application number 26-00558, Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners and Chair, Matthew Choi, manager for Free Spirits LLC. I have no changes to the investigative report. This is for the Honolulu Pride Festival or Pride Pahana at International Marketplace on the ground level in that courtyard.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
I have none.
Motion to approve application number 26-00558.
Second? Been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-00558. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, application numbers 26-00562-1, the 26-00526-31, JSC Agent Luke.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Minya Mu on behalf of JSC KJ Inc. No changes to the investigative report.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question.
Motion to approve application number 26-00526-1 through 26-00526-31 inclusively.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-0526-1, 26-00526-31. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number nine, application number 26-00546, One Accord Guitar Lessons. Hello.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Chad McDonald. I'm here on behalf of One Accord Guitar Lessons Inc. We're hoping to obtain a one day special nonprofit liquor license for a fundraiser on October 12th this year.
Okay, tell us about your event.
I'm sorry.
Can you walk us through your event?
Yeah, it's in the form of a motorcycle rally. We're expecting about 2,000, 3,000 people, about 1,500 to 2,000 motorcycles. It's a fundraiser. It's being held on privately owned land, a privately owned five acre lot in Kahuku, right there behind all the food trucks. October 12th.
And of course, no riding or driving.
Correct, we're gonna have, yeah, we've reached out to Mothers Against Drunk Driving. We're hoping they're gonna be there. We have breathalyzers on site for anybody that's concerned. We'll be checking everybody's ID when they come in. Everybody will get a wristband. We'll have security there, yeah.
Okay. Questions?
So, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Is there gonna be any special duty officers in part of your security plan? What is your security plan?
We do have security walking around to make sure nobody gets unruly and everybody's, you know, following the rules. And as a wrist tag, I believe we're gonna have HPD there. I'm not 100% on that just yet, but I know we do have security there the whole time.
Okay, because with 2,000 or 3,000 people, I'd recommend at least letting the administration know if you're going to have special duty officers or not because you never know.
Absolutely, I can do that, no problem, sure.
And then I do think there's a question in regard to confirming on the consent of the landlord to use the property for distribution of alcohol.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that all squared away.
I do, yes sir. I've got a Lord and Lord authorization for sale and service of liquor right here. I put in, he's on board. Yeah, yes sir.
Okay.
Could you have the licensing supervisor address this issue?
Why is it like?
Supervising investigator Daniel Sato. So according to city records, there's only, there's a fee owner and there's a less seen. And this this entity is not identified anywhere.
You mean on the grand tour of?
Consent? The consent for this.
I guess who signed your consent form?
My understanding, what the owner of the property did. I met with him last week and the owner of One Accord Guitar Lessons Inc., who I've worked with many times over the years. And I met the three of them. We walked the spot. We did a layout. So I met the gentleman in person there. I s- that I, my understanding is that's who signed it. This is the first I've heard about that. My understanding is the person that signed the authorization for the landlord authorization is the gentleman I met and that's who that is.
I will advise the Commission that as you've done in the past, you do have the ability to approve this license application. We would not be able to issue it until this issue has been resolved.
Okay.
Since there is sometime the, say, October 12th, so you actually could take action on approval and but we would not issue the license until we worked out whatever details that need to be worked out with respect to the landlord's consent. And then you would not have to return.
That'd be great, thank you, Ms. Okay, to that. Okay. I agree.
That's surprising, our landlord, is, um. Do you have it recognize who the landlord is? Do you know?
I have the city records, yes.
Okay. Is that the name of the, on the consent?
The name on the record sale?
No, it's, there's actually two owners. One is H Street Plaza LLC. The second one is Rena Enterprises Inc. And that'll give you some direction.
Yeah, because you might need to.
So I just need to get back with him and just make sure I have the right person signing that actual, yeah, okay.
So you need to work with Daniel and licensing to confirm that the landlord is that they have on city record is the person signing off on your consent. And what we're going to do is we're gonna make a motion to approve your license or your request for this license contingent upon prior to your event. You get that straightened out with our administration with licensing.
Copy that.
Okay?
Yeah.
So my motion is going to be to approve application number 26-00546 contingent upon the licensee getting it sorted out with our licensing department of the consent of the landlord.
So before I second the motion, you know, I would reiterate what Vice Chair Hollinger indicated to you earlier about your security. This for 3,000 people with minors included in that open area. You can never tell what's gonna happen, so I would want you to at least be more exact in the type of security you have in private and or police.
Okay.
So that, I mean, for the good of your own event, you know.
100%, and I can present a more solidified security plan when I bring him those other documents if you'd like.
I share it, yeah, all right, second emotion.
Thank you, man. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-00546 with the stipulation stated. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Calling agenda item number 11, application number 26-00573, Authorizes Foundation.
Aloha, I'm Jennifer Shack. I'm the Executive Director with the Association. And we're at our gala on October 17th at the Royal Hawaiian. It's our annual dinner gala that we do every year.
Commissioners, any questions?
None. I have no questions, but all I'm going to ask is that if prior to your gala on the 12th, if you can get floor plans that actually have kind of a red marking, because the ones I have on the file doesn't really show red where your actual license space will be, that's all I'm gonna ask for.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Um, beyond that, motion to approve application number 25, oh, excuse me. Motion to approve application number 26-00573.
Second? Been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-00573. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number 12, applications number 26-00611-1 to 26-00611-2, Chongqing Hot Pot, Waikiki, hello.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of Commission, Keith Kiuchi representing Chongqing Hot Pot, Waikiki. This is a special license. Our second temp runs out on Saturday. Just to put the commissioner, the issue was really my client provided a floor plan that was inadequate and we had to have it totally redone, so.
I have no question. Motion to approve application number 26-00611-1 to 26-00611-22 inclusively.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve application number 26-00611-1 to 26-00611-22. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. You're calling out of order, agenda item number 23, request number 26-00612, Chongqing Hot Pot, Waikiki.
Again, good afternoon Chair, Members of Commission, Keith Kiuchi, Chongqing Hot Pot. This is a request to be placed into the pilot program. The again, the challenge for the investigator was the floor plan. That's why I got delayed. But the new floor plan was submitted yesterday, so.
Okay, yeah, so hold on.
Yeah, so first thing I'm going to say on the request to, for the special portion. If we don't list on top of these things, when your second temporary license is going to expire, the first thing I'm going to look at is to say no, because it was designed right for two steps. And so right on, I didn't see anything listed there, but you had previously stated in the prior one that your second temp is going to run out shortly. So when does your second temp expire?
Saturday.
Saturday. And you've burned through the first two.
Right.
Okay. So and the floor plan is now currently correct.
It was submitted yesterday.
Okay. And when did, I guess my bigger question is, so when did they find out that the floor plan was incorrect? And I guess how long did it take?
It took us roughly two weeks to get the floor plan corrected.
Okay.
When I was here for a hearing two weeks ago, Investigator Cruz pointed it out, gave me, and he actually was very good because he marked everything up.
Okay.
Um, I think I think that's a result of my client using the previous floor plan and obviously it changed.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what happened.
Okay.
Well, counsel, the delay actually is on the part of your.
Yeah, it was my client. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, Investigator Cruz actually called me a week before he handed me the floor plan two weeks ago and he said, there's a problem. And I said, what, what is the problem? He said, there's so numerous that I think you need to come in and see, see what the problem is. So I did. So yeah, this was not an issue with workload back. Investigator Cruz and I had talked ahead of time. This is running out. This is what's going on. And he went out and that's when he noticed there were, there were some significant problems, so.
Thank you.
You want to say, Ray, you might have.
Let's go to the executive.
Okay. So I am going, the Commission may go into an executive session for the following reasons. Present to whoever I statute section 92-4 and subsection 92-5A4 to consult the Board's attorneys on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the Board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities that are retaining to, that are related to, um, agenda item number 23, request number 26-00612. I'll entertain emotionally going to an executive session for this purpose.
Double.
Second?
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to go into an executive session. Any needs or reservations seeing none. I'm also vote aye and we are in executive session. Okay, we're back from executive session where we were discussing the kind of issues around the pilot program for this fee reduction. And we'll discuss a little bit more in terms of formalizing this as we go into our kind of uh adopting rules around this uh program. But for the uh request itself.
Mr. Kiuchi, so as we all know, right, we put together this possible pilot program for individuals that had the situations of the two temps running out, and based on the fact that could be the reason that those temps ran out were because our side was falling behind and unable to assist or get their license done fast enough. You yourself had stated it was based on a floor plan that was for them, so they're kind of the ones that also held up the process. So based on that, I am going to be denying the request, making a motion to deny it because of that.
Well, the one thing I'll point out
Okay.
is if you go back three weeks ago, that still wouldn't have been enough time for them to get their permanent license. So it's a combination of both.
I still believe, so I I think in the spirit of what we've talked about in doing it, right, we've always made the exception that if it was on our end, we worked toward helping, if it wasn't, then we kind of denied in the past because of that.
Yeah.
So we're gonna stay consistent within that, or what I am. Okay, so my motion is going to be to deny request number two six dash zero zero six one two.
The second.
Uh it's been moved and seconded to deny request number
Twenty-three.
Thanks. Question number two six dash zero zero six one two, any needs or reservation? Okay, seeing none, I also vote I, uh the the quest is denied.
I am going to also state, just for the record, that the commission would like the administration, since the pilot program has kind of been done with, and we are working toward moving this into a better area, we would like the administration to try to work together, together some type of verbiage for us to put in our new rule changes to accommodate for this pilot program or this that we've done, right, because actually we've talked about ending, right, wanna make it more feasible. So we would request the administration to work on that.
The the current set of uh proposed rule amendments does contain um a a rule addressing the uh the fee reduction program, uh currently is is fairly is fairly broad in scope. But uh we're hoping through the stakeholders meetings and public hearing, we can refine the rules to make it um useful and and meaningful for for applicants.
Alright, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh calling agenda item number thirteen, application number T five dash zero one sixty-five from Lonnie S O T Inc.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Min Young Wu on behalf of Lonnie S O T Inc. There is no changes to the investigative report.
Okay, commissioners, questions?
I have no.
I have none.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one six two five, second.
So moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one sixty-five for public hearing, any needs or reservation hearing none, I also vote I, the application. Okay, calling agenda item number fourteen, agenda item number T five dash zero one six six nine from the Exchange LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Naomi Cole is one of the owners of the applicant, um we have no changes to investigative report.
Any commissioners, any questions?
None, I have none. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one six six nine, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number T five dash zero one six six nine for public hearing, any needs or reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number T five dash zero one six seven zero from the Exchange LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Naomi Cole is one of the owners of the applicant, I have no changes to investigative report.
Commissioners, questions?
Okay, so Ms. Cole, I just wanted stated on the record, you look at both of your floor plans for both agenda item fourteen and fifteen, there is two existing offices that are not marked as being part of either of the licensed space, that's correct, right?
That's actually my office.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because I look at it like very. Sure, okay, that's the only thing I wanted.
Let's go next door and get some beer.
Alright, I have no other comments, thank you, the clarifying. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one six seven zero, second.
So moved and seconded to approve application number T five dash zero one six seven zero, any needs or reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number sixteen, application number two six dash zero zero five three four from HSI Honolulu Joint, Honolulu Joint Venture Company.
Good, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, commissioners, Ms. Huaai. Robert Ichikawa representing HSI uh Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Human rights, Mr. Chris Katohiro, last name spelled K A T O H I R O. He's the executive director of operations, and we have no changes to the report.
Can you explain the two little yellow license areas?
Oh.
Oh, this is just in the airport.
Yeah, yeah, so this one kiosk area, one's a kind of a above site plan and one's a kind of a full black, so it's the same city.
I have no question. Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero five three four, second.
So moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero five three four, any needs or reservation seeing none. I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, application number two six dash zero zero five four nine from Pho Viet.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Min Young Wu on behalf of Pho Viet, Viet Hong LLC. There is no changes to the investigative report.
Any commissioners, any questions?
I have no question, that's.
None.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero five four nine, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero five four nine, any needs or reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number eighteen, uh application number two six dash zero zero five five six from Bamboo Tiger Shop, hello.
Oh.
Our standard um.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion, I'll make a disclosure that I serve on a commission with the um attorney for the licensee, but this will not affect my ability to be impartial on this matter.
I will make the same disclosure, Mr. Hung.
As will I, okay, I'll ready to go.
Great, good afternoon, Commissioner Seth Buckley, authorization for the applicant, to my right is Mr. Nicholas Wong, last name spelled W O N G. He is owner and manager for the applicants, uh this application is for a catering license, it's a one day uh event, it's a summer festival held at the Palolo Hong Hong Wanji. Um it's a family affair, uh relatively small in size, about two hundred people. Um you can see from the floor plan, uh the the um license premises is relatively small. Uh it's fully enclosed either by fence or by building, uh which will not be accessed. Uh there's one entrance point, uh that will be manned uh with security. Uh there'll be a check-in where if people want to consume alcohol, they will be ID'd and wristbanded. Uh we don't anticipate a lot of alcohol being consumed at this event, it's a family event, it's mostly for parents and their younger children to play some games. Um likewise, we don't really anticipate a high risk of underage drinking or passing uh since that demographic probably won't be present at this meeting or at this event. Um and I I'm hoping that's passing of alcohol to ten-year-olds isn't a thing. Um but we will be diligent, we will have roaming uh security that will be doing random checks, we will be doing um uh just observation for any passing, um and we will have um, uh like I said, we'll have the entrance uh manned by security at all times.
Okay, so any question I will have is if a parent seems to overindulge but does not bring their children, will they be able to leave their car parked at Hong Wanji if they need to leave?
I really should have preemptively answered that for you, um the the temple does have a secondary parking lot. Uh anyone who is in that type of situation is welcome to leave the vehicle there.
Alright, thank you, that's my only question.
The questions.
Good. Okay, motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero five five six, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero five five six, any needs or reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nineteen, application number two six dash zero zero five seven six from Sedexo America LLC. Hello.
Hello, commissioners, um my name is Darlene Leonis, that's L E O N E S, catering manager for Sedexo at U H one. This application is the same as the first three home games.
Oh.
Wait, what was found deficient? Oh, what was the deficiency on the application?
Um on the map, I didn't have the north, south, west, west, and I think there was an extra zero on my tax map.
Any questions? Why, I'm cutting it close, two days.
I have no questions.
All that last three home games. No, no questions.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero five seven six, second.
So moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero five seven six, any needs or reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling uh request number twenty. Request number T six dash zero zero five one seven from Waikai Wade LLC.
Noon, gentlemen, um I'm Amber Jacro, spelt J A C R O U X, special events director at Waikai on behalf of Michael Lassiter, the food and beverage director at Waikai. Uh there's been no changes to the original investigative report.
Okay, any questions?
I have no questions.
None, none.
Motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero five one seven.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero five one seven, any needs or reservation seeing none, I also vote I, the request is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, request number two six dash zero zero six zero eight from Keith Kiuchi.
Good afternoon again, Chair Members of Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. Uh I finally talked to somebody at DOTEX that got it straight. So we're asking till October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to obtain the tax clearance, the holdup was they refused to issue a tax clearance because they wanted him to file an M eighteen form, and M eighteen form is a report for a wholesaler. is a report for a wholesaler. Mr. Suter does not run a wholesaler. I think there's some other issues in there which I'm just gonna leave there, so.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Right.
Motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero six zero eight, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero six zero eight. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye the request is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, request number two six dash zero zero six zero seven. Mr. Kiuchi.
Again, yeah, again, good afternoon, chair, members of the commission, Keith Kiuchi for the applicant. Um, it was with some sadness that, uh, I see Hatsu Hana Restaurants closing, longtime client of mine. It was there basically forty-five years. Um, Mr. Yamagishi passed away about nine years ago. Uh, made it very, very difficult for his widow. Uh, Kevin Aoki, who, you know, runs Doraku, runs Blue Tree, uh, is Rocky Aoki's son, has agreed to take it over. The entity name is Doraku HHV LLC. Um, he's gonna take it over, reopen as of November one, uh. And I've done work for Mr. Aoki before and I have every confidence that it's, it's gonna be a very good operation there, so.
I have no other question.
None.
Motion. Motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero six zero seven, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero six zero seven. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye the request is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, motion on adoption of decision.
Yes, your motion of adoption of decision and orders for agenda items twenty-four through twenty-eight, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the adoption of decisions and orders, agenda item number twenty-four through twenty-eight. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye the, uh, decisions and orders are adopted. Calling agenda item number twenty-nine for the liquor commission will be performing the evaluation of the liquor control administrator. Are there any things that we would like to say in open session before we go into executive session? Okay.
Second.
Might as well do the same.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, no, no, hold it.
First one.
First one, first one. Yeah, do we need to?
No.
I don't know, that's what happened.
Okay, hold on, second. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to go into an executive session per cent to Hawaii Revised Statute, section ninety-two dash four and subsection ninety-two dash five, A four, to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues in a matter pertaining to the board's powers, these individual liabilities, and relating to personnel matters and the performance evaluation of the liquor control administrator. Also, any, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session for the reasons stated. Any needs or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, we are in executive session.
Okay, we're back from executive session where we were discussing the evaluation of the administrator. We will now go on to agenda item number thirty, like administrator. Report Mr. Pativas.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, Sapa Kilos, Administrator Honolulu Commission. With regard to operations, I think you'd like to know that NLCI one joined our team this this week. And it'll be going through the the trainings for that three week training program for the map. Additionally, administrative services and the enforcement sections concluded interviews of the latest slate of office assistants in LCI one candidates respectively. I understand there are there are people of interest to us and hopefully, you know, the officers will go out and hopefully they'll accept them. Additionally, Chief Investigator Neri provided bodyboard camera training to the enforcement section on the sixteenth. The pilot program is scheduled to begin and to commence on the twenty third. We've sent out e-blast on the sixteenth and has met our licensees followed up by hard copy mail. To the license, I think that that's to ensure that we we reach as broad an audience as possible. And then also, and finally, we will also send another e-blast on Monday, the twenty second. And we're hoping that the licensees are aware of the fact that we're going to be the that the enforcement team will be going out there with body ones. And with that, I'm open to any questions you have.
No questions, okay. So we are all set. With respect to all of the work rules around bodywork cameras, we were going to pilot. A number of them or just one?
A number of them, each one will be a month long, just to see what kind of functions we we want and what's available. And then, of course, that will probably be that will that will affect the procurement when we decide what functions we we want.
All right, with that, agenda item number thirty one, any announcements?
Happy early birthday to you Chair, coming up on Sunday.